Alright guys, we're gonna get up. Get this started. My name is Jay Castenosa, the Planning Board Chair. I recognize some of the public here, so I'm not gonna go and introduce everybody. But the Planning Board is here, we're having a public hearing tonight at an information meeting on some proposed ordinance for medical marijuana. And we've conducted half a dozen meetings, crafting this, bringing this together, getting input from the public, talking amongst ourselves. And this is the final thing that we're gonna submit to the Parsons Field Select. Now, if you got the chance to grab it, and if you didn't, there are sample copies up at the front table. There's also a general adoption process of town ordinance amendments explanation on how something becomes ordinance on the table. And it just goes through the steps, step by step, of what it takes for us to take an idea, put it on paper, present it as a document to become voteable to the town. And then thirdly, David took the stuff that we've been working with, and he's put it into actual warrants wording for the vote. And I think, are there copies of this one?
No, I have a couple up here, but probably like five or six.
So it basically summarizes what you guys have seen, what was on that table, and just makes it into yes or no questions. Grab this, we're taking a look at them. I think that this, I mean, does a good job of making it simple, but my fear is it almost makes it too simple because it doesn't have all the explanations up in there. I don't know, I thought we talked about that tonight, I think this is the first time I've seen it. As soon as I walked in. But, so we're gonna discuss that a little bit, and then we're gonna take questions, comments, concerns from the public. This is public hearing, this is made in front of you guys, and we're just gonna sit here, take notes, ask questions. So for the board, the first thing is the thing that David crafted up the warrant article stuff, but I mean, what are you guys' feelings about that? I saw this when I walked in. So David did this.
The one where I just thought that the, it seems like Article 1 is opted for every man. How is that the appropriate amendment to the law?
That's what, how we crafted it, and that's how we crafted it, and it's included a statement in Article 1. Do we have more of those? Anybody can see one? You made Article 1 into a question. So, right here?
Yeah, yes sir. I think that they use Article 1 on our, some of the processes. And to grant, so, so, I think it shifts down our, sort of, one.
It's more, having more.
Yeah, so, I guess we could put that as a preamble. And then, like you said, we'll have, we'll have him strip Article 1 and just change the numbers going down.
Does that mean anything in terms of people who understand how to vote on how it works?
Right, absolutely. Yeah, so, this is what we voted on, our, our version, not the warrant article version, is what we're gonna send to the select board. So, we'll send, we'll send what we voted on as the finalizing thing to the select board, and then we'll put a note in there, hey, strip Article 1 off if it's not, it's not, it's not your option. Okay.
Alright, that's all set.
And then, the other thing was, I got an email earlier today from somebody who came in here tonight. They had some concerns, not with anybody's gross stuff here, just in general, but they, they're fearing reciprocity from somebody else's row, and they'd like to remain anonymous. So, I told, I told them, listen, if you're gonna send an email for us to read and discuss with questions in there, like, it's basically public record, so, I don't want them to have any, remain anonymous. But I wanted, I told them I'd put it to the board, see what you guys thought, and go from there.
What about hearing, if that came from?
Yeah.
That does, I mean, Alex, anything, for you?
I like to know where it comes from.
Probably, we have to maintain something. If you just wanna throw it out there, then throw it out there.
What is it? I mean, no, no, it's not complaint, it's concerns about some grow operations, accidentally around town, and like, unfortunate stuff. I mean, I don't wanna go into it unless we're gonna entertain it or not. I, again, I mean, these are like the random emails I get. If they were willing to say, hey, read this, because I'm not gonna be there tonight, then I'm, but... I didn't, it's up to them. We'll go, we'll go.
Yeah, I guess my, my thing is, if someone was really to nominate, like, all these are great.
I mean, there's occasionally a case for remaining anonymous, but that's when we're in fear. I don't, I mean, is somebody who's fearful in this community, does someone, you know, if they have a concern, is somebody's gonna?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think that's, that's actually what it was, that they didn't want. They said... Yes, I would love for my mom to have shared tonight, answers to be addressed. I just want to remain anonymous about this, since I do about a butt this land, and I have animals, and I don't want you to have that, because it's a session. You see it's unsettled.
Indeed, so it's also about somebody's decisions.
Right.
So there's an accusation involved, we have to remain anonymous, so that's where it gets at.
Right.
There's an accusation from you guys.
Yeah.
I mean, one will entertain it if the person wants to come forward. I mean, but I feel we're wasting a lot of time on someone's identity or anything.
Yep. I find it.
I mean, if there's a anonymous, so.
Right.
If there's a general concern, this applies to marijuana ordinance, I certainly feel that it can. There's an accusation against an individual who's not a disservice, involving that of yours, me.
Alright, so, moving to the next thing now. Questions? Yeah. Somebody's gotta ask, I'm still, what you got, Will?
Any adoption process? I noticed, within 30 days of republic hearing, the Planning Board shall make a regulation. This is my word, is there? So, just trying to figure out what their vote table looks like. Is there another guideline that the Select Board falls into after that?
That the Select Board has to take catch on?
Like, so you have 30 days to get it done? And then, it says the Select Board will terminate, which means they'll be, now vote on the board line. But there's no real time here, so process wise, whether like how long? And propose that there's a, or if there's a just, if there's an added to it, or prevented in a, or?
And this is what just goes there, and is that a date? So, can they comment? Well, as it says a warrant article, the article itself has remained what we voted on to pass to the Select Board. Now, if they, they are gonna determine, like, the time for it, like, there's no stipulation on when that's gonna happen from the Planning Board to them, there's no notice on the answer. Yeah, they, I mean, they have to meet the general, like, two weeks, yeah, the private notice, yeah.
But they don't, like, hearts.
Yeah. Now, like, the Planning Board has mentioned that they want to have this, like, as a special town vote, rather than during the general vote, you know, it's a hammer. So, some time between getting to a vote, and then take a guess. But you also have two to the Select Board.
Oh, she just stepped out, but she'll be back.
Somebody, yeah, so... Wait.
Okay.
No, I know you did. Yeah, we, sorry.
Can you go for it?
We have talked about it, and it will definitely be, I can't say it's gonna be next week, but it's definitely gonna be sooner than later, because obviously the process is taking long, as all the rest necessarily has, but...
I was kinda just being...
No, we're definitely not, we're definitely not waiting for the town meeting, it's gonna be a separate, separate, yeah. There's no real reason to wait, as far as I'm concerned, once it's been passed us, I don't see a reason. We'll just, or some, correct, necessary advertisement, and then, yeah. Well, thank you. Were there questions, comments, concerns? Mary?
I was surprised to see that you didn't add a thousand square foot, and below, and a thousand square foot and above, instead of the way the state does a complaint, however.
Are you talking about for the, uh... Manufacturing facilities?
No, um... There's a section, I think, that states, you know, about...
Yeah, I, I'm, 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 what we made on the last public information layer.
Here we are. Um, T1 manufacturing facility.
Yep.
Yeah, I think the thousand square foot was really only discussed when we were talking about, like, cultivation, and more space for grow operation, but we all didn't really discuss or change for, like, manufacturing, or testing, which are all, but don't necessarily require the same amount of square footage, so, grow operation necessarily.
Yeah, accessory structure, separate. Yeah, the only thing that was changed was the draft cultivation time, and I'd like to...
Right, right.
Then we wouldn't say that you need some backup regulations, or you don't have anything for accessory structure. So, as far as I, we're allowed fifteen thousand square foot.
Mary, Mary, is accessory structure, right? You have, you have part of it, that's what we're talking about, accessory structure. So, uses slash structure, for the accessory structure, under that, that marijuana testing facility.
What page?
Article four, I mean, all of it, all of it, all of them have accessory structure. So, as to the line, that's...
You don't have to go further, so we just want to have a question.
I can answer that one.
To be very official to me, just, sure, well, I have a few questions, that you can throw in, just understanding what's why.
Yep.
You know, what, where do the greenhouses stand, you know, what are they, what type of facility are they considered? Are they in the four thousand, over, or not the?
That, um, yeah. So, I'll go through this, one by one, and then we'll discuss it. So, Article 1, I'm just gonna read, read through this really fast, you guys have it in front of you. Article 1, basically, it's, it won't, it's not a votable, votable article. Article 1 was designed to give the public the information necessary of why this has to come to a vote. So it says authorization, just municipal authorization needed, authorized registered caregiver retail stores, which are dispensaries, marijuana testing facilities, and manufacturing facilities, are not operating on the effective date of this section to operate in municipality unless municipal legislative body has defined in Title 38, Section 2001, subsection 9, has voted to adopt or amend ordinance or approval warrant article allowing registered caregiver retail stores, which are dispensaries, marijuana testing facilities, or manufacturing facilities, and have to be able to operate within municipality. Now, the state has said, for these specific things, the caregiver retail stores, dispensaries, testing facilities, and manufacturing facilities, a vote needs to occur from a town in order for those things to operate. What we did was we separated each of the subsequent articles as those specific things. So the next one, unless there's any questions on Article 1? No? Yes, sir?
If this is going to town, that, that should be, that should be a vote.
Right, so, that, and that's what we were discussing with the version that David had written up. That was supposed to be, our plan was for that to be informational statement, and then each one of these things, like, retail stores, dispensaries, testing facilities, and manufacturing facilities, would become separately voted. So if, say, testing facilities, the public would be in favor of that, and not manufacturing facilities, only testing facilities would be allowed within Parsons Field.
I think the biggest thing is the sample article, just, you kind of have to disregard it. It was put together just as an example to assist, but it's some misinformation, so, it's, it is, it all separated. Don't look, don't look at the sample article, basically, that is, is missing. Essentially, each one of these land uses will be voted on, and if you approve that, if you approve, if the voter approves that specific article, that type of land use, then they're up, then that, they're also opting in for having that available to the town. So, if they vote no, then they're, then that makes all of these four of these. So, some of them could be allowed, some of them might not be allowed, they could all be allowed, whatever.
Yes, sir?
This is voted out by the town. What happens to the facilities that are already in production, or re-milled, or partying?
That's a great question. Now...
Do we have any facilities that are operational now that this does not apply to?
So, there are no medical retail stores, manufacturings, testing, and, which is the one? Retail stores, dispensaries, in Parsons Field that are operating currently. What, what is happening is individual caregivers have their own greenhouses, and they're doing businesses at their homes, and other things, and that's allowed by the state. The, these specific things are what need a town vote, and work for those things to open up as a business.
Is that, is that, are you getting the fairing one?
Yeah. Just got a little quiet in the air, nice. So, now, I do wanna put a caveat out there, David has been doing this a lot longer than I have, and if he did do Article 1 because it's a requirement from the state, then that, that might throw a monkey wrench in there. I don't think so, I don't know for sure, wasn't my intent, wasn't our intent, so, um, yeah, we'll, we'll, yeah. We'll, we'll find out. So, Article 2...
Because it would be a problem, you know, of Article 1, if it was written that way, and it all passed, but then nobody approved any of the ordinance.
Right.
You essentially have to live up, so, start over. So, yeah, I think, I think it's just a matter of just continuing to work.
Yeah, I think so too, I'm just, I'm putting it out.
No, it's gonna be a continuing example.
I don't, I don't want, I don't want us to be wrong in that, like, anyways. So, Article 2 showed that a town allow medical marijuana retail stores, and it's got a definition of what the retail store is. And what we've done is we've taken the purpose input, we've looked at the zoning, we've looked at how other towns are arguing things, we've talked with the main municipal authority, the planning development people from the county, and then we've compared it with, like, businesses that are existing within our social ordinance. And we have toned down whether a medical marijuana retail store, less than 4,000 feet, and more than 4,000 feet, would be allowed, or requires a site plan review, or requires a condition use permit, or special exemption permit, in each of the zones for the town. So that's village, village residential, rural, farm and forest, light industrial. And that's what that, that table is there. So, not only are people voting on whether they believe something should be allowed, but also where it should be allowed. So, medical marijuana retail stores, for example, even though you're saying yes to that, it's not gonna be allowed in farm and forest, and it's not gonna be allowed in light industrial or resource conservation. So that's gonna take a little bit of explaining when the vote actually happens, which is why we wrote it out like this. And for medical marijuana retail stores, you can look at the graph there. And then there's also a good clause, clause, um, that says we can revoke approval or renewal of, of an application if the licensee, as violator, does not meet, or has failed to comply with any terms, conditions, or provisions, any vote adopted pursuant to it, and any supplemental relevant state or local laws. So that's really, that's, that's what the Planning Board put in there, to give us a little bit of a power to say, hey, listen, if you're gonna open a business, you can't just go rampant with it. If you're not doing the right thing, we're gonna, go to the town, yeah, it's the town, we're voting. Now, by, by making this a votable item for each one of these articles, if the town says yes to that, that empowers the CEO to enforce it through that accessory structure. Now, the main medical marijuana people up there still have oversight on everything, but the code enforcement officer is able to inspect these structures and make sure that they're all relevant in code. That's how the municipal, the medical, the medical people, I'm sorry, the medical, what's her title?
Program.
Program, thank you. Delegated a bit of power to the towns, so, yes, sir?
When you say that, you mean like at the onset of the building process, or during the, during the new process?
Yeah, like conversion to that, that structure, so, let's say...
But not like a yearly inspection by a CDR?
No.
Okay. It's essentially no different than what we bring in?
Yeah. Just a standard building inspection. Now...
Do you guys just rely on the state to make sure that it continues to operate within the laws? Are, are we gonna have any enforcement by the code enforcement officer, seeing that it's the way we've structured it, that it's being operated within what our recommendation, what our requirements are, periodically? So, are we gonna? I mean, we're essentially delegating the land use component of it, and determining, trying to lay out the groundwork to determine where it can be. As far as a business is following the laws that are pertinent within the state of Maine, that's up to the... Yeah, whether the governing body oversees that, I mean, and that's true for all, almost everything. We've got some rules that are different in the state. Is our code enforcement officer gonna monitor it, when he wants to, or does he wait for a complaint, or?
So, this, this, this article alone is very narrowly looking at land use for medical marijuana in those four subsections. Now, there, there has been some talk, once this is settled out, the Planning Board is gonna review the same type of warrant for the recreational side. Additionally, there, there might be another warrant for the town, for businesses in the medic, not, excuse me, not medical, but the retail portion of marijuana, to apply for a license through, through the town office. And that, in itself, would give the code enforcement officer more fight to, to view, like, the rules. Now, none of those rules, none of that exists in this, at all. All we're, we're looking at is land use of where things are allowed, and what the process is for them to apply to have those.
It wants to become part of our order. It's not part of our order. Would anybody look at, if this, once, this, the vote takes place, and whoever's approved it, this approved, and the Planning Board, they have to, this stipulation, they have to have a site review, and all of that. Once that's approved, we wouldn't require any licensing, licensing of medical marijuana facilities. That was just saying, but we will on recreational.
I, I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm saying...
Who, who, who does that after, I mean, when, how does that come about?
So, this, this in itself is strictly the zoning for the medical marijuana. Now, if, if the board...
I know, I understand, I'm just looking at it.
But, yeah, so, if, if the board tackles that, if the Planning Board tackles that initiative, or it could be done, it could be done by any member of the public that wants to do a warrant article, it could be done by the Select Board, it would be, like, it could be anybody that brings this up for a town vote for it to happen.
So if the town's people wanted that, they'd approach public selection.
Right, well, so ultimately, the selectmen are the people that will take a warrant article and put it before the town for vote. Now, yeah, with this, the Planning Board has taken the initiative to get it sorted out. And we're doing the warrant article to the selectmen. Now, I, I can't say one or the other of what could happen with any of that. Questions? Yes?
This would be probably the only topic you guys can handle about, right? Because the other side would follow, like, stipulations of licence, that would go through the other side, across the hall?
You said it.
Because that seems like, it's just something that I don't think we've ever seen in, in anywhere, you know, with the, with our license.
Well, so, yeah, the, I, and the only reason that I mentioned the, the other portion of that is, I think Saco, Saco might be one of the towns, I don't know, they, they passed three things at once. They, they passed their licensing stuff, they passed their medical, and they passed the retail, all all in one shot. Like, I think that would be awesome to do, but we're, we've been working on this, and we're sticking with this.
So, you know, there's more, obviously, that, that will be coming down the road, and this is, you know, specific to these things that have to happen in order for these things to occur, or not to occur.
And again, this is strictly medical marijuana. And it's strictly these... And it's strictly these very specific things, the retail stores, the dispensary, the testing facilities, and manufacturing facilities. Yes?
So just so when this goes through, we know that there's protections on agricultural site. Would you say a prohibition of medical marijuana retail stores, I'm just saying that as an example because you can go to these articles because they're all kind of the same, would not affect personal use and possession of marijuana or existing medical marijuana permitted uses? So would that be the phrase that essentially still shows that we are protecting the cultivators, the cultivating caregivers right to cultivate the state law, pursuant to state law?
I, I wouldn't say specifically for cultivation, but I would say like the existing laws for, for somebody to be a caregiver and operate within those parameters? Yes, that, that's absolutely protected.
It's kind of saying like, even if you say no to this, the rest of the permitted uses will, will be permitted as they're written in the state law.
Right. And that's what's happening now.
No opt-in for that anyways.
Right, yeah.
The side that specifically can't, you must regulate it anyways. I just think, I just stay alone. I guess you're just wondering, that's kind of where it falls, that's where I've seen it. Because it's not expressly in here, you know, like protection for a cultivation, but permitted uses, I would imagine means that.
I mean, it could be.
Well, I thought it'd be a caregiver if you're, you know, a caregiver, right?
I thought the state.
Right, well, you could technically be a, a caregiver, but it's a denominator. You're like a purchaser or someone else that can't get that.
I, I thought the state wanted the town to regulate this and I thought on the medical side, you can't get us to replace, I understand this doesn't affect anything. But going forward, I think the only thing that's, that's in place now that's happening in this town would be allowed other than personal use. That's what was my understanding, no? So if we, if the town votes this down, okay, what's gonna be allowed in this town?
People can still, people can still cultivate, they can still be medical caregivers. They can't have like a, they can't have like a separate retail store.
Oh, so these facilities can't have a, so whatever they can do now, they can do, they'll continue to allow.
These are things that they can't currently do unless we pass, the town passes ordinance for it and opts into allow it. Basically, it says they're gonna allow it and then just to create some regulation around it, so.
Yeah, if this did, nothing passed on this, we would be like kind of where we are right now.
Yeah, and so you did mention like greenhouses and stuff?
Well, I'm trying to figure out what facility they came on the.
So I, I will say that.
Because you've got a square foot.
A greenhouse? They are supposed to pull a permit for that.
Right, and it talks about under it says possesses, cultivates.
Yeah, I'm not talking about this, this at all. I'm talking about just the general rule of thumb. If somebody wants to put a greenhouse up on their property, they're supposed to pull a permit.
And they have to go with state regulations on how much they can grow and what the size it is and all that.
Right.
So if that, if someone wants to, it doesn't, it isn't, a greenhouse doesn't fall under retail dispensary even, even though it says possesses, cultivates, manufactures?
No, so we.
That, that isn't considered a greenhouse?
We, we actually, we had, we had an article that we scrapped at the last meeting that, that addressed like cultivation facilities, which would have been greenhouses. But since the state has these specific things, that's what we've, we've decided to focus on.
And I guess it's like a greenhouse, you can have a greenhouse at a specific size, but under the medical program, one person can only grow thirty plants. That's it, that's the cap.
Okay.
The only difference would be if you have, I guess, two adults, two adults living together. So each can have thirty, so that's six. So it's not, so there's, the state is, it's not, it's not like, and again, that's why like we're gonna tackle recreation at a later date. That's a whole other reason.
I'm just, I'm talking about, well, I agree with you. And then, do they fall in here anyway?
The total number.
Not necessarily.
Not, not in this land use ordinance that we're tackling. Because I know that there has been some complaints to the select board.
Yeah, well, I think it's happened.
Right.
So where, where do we, what does the planning board do with that?
Well, I mean.
Or where, where.
They like that greenhouse, they have a greenhouse on their property, I mean, right? I mean, say, I, say I wanted a greenhouse to grow like a whole bunch of tomatoes.
I'm not talking that, I'm talking bigger facilities. Hundred foot, hundred foot by hundred foot greenhouse.
They could still only grow thirty plants in there.
I'm like, Jesse, Jesse chime in really quick, Jesse.
Gary, I think what you're referring to is something that the state is neglecting to deal with. Like, I'm pretty sure that's under state, what those people are doing is against state law. You know what I'm saying? I don't.
I know, yeah, I know.
So I think that, I've talked to the cop, you know, town cop about it and he's literally kind of just like.
Well, the obvious way.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty obvious they don't grow.
Not grow thirty plants.
Correct. But it's something that I don't know, like, with state.
What's happening with that?
I don't, that's, they can't, like, that's out of their control.
Yeah, so if someone comes for permission and put in an agricultural greenhouse in any state, we, what the, you would, or any more issues.
Well, all right, you guys, let's cut this, this side chat and then let's get back, back on track. So first of all, the, if somebody came for a permit for greenhouse, it goes to the CEO. And unless it needs to have a special site plan or review by the planning board, we won't, we won't even see it. To be blunt.
Right.
Now, I understand that it's a concern and I, I do think that some stuff that, that's gonna be worked in the future is gonna kind of address that portion of it. But I do want to stick on topic to what we have for, for the articles tonight, okay? And like I said, we did, we did include cultivation as a separate one article, but the board agreed that we would, we would remove it and we would focus on these specific articles. Okay? And I'm not, I'm not pushing your concern aside at, at all, sir. I'm not, I, I just, I don't think that it's something that we're gonna be able to get to the bottom of.
Yeah, well, legally, they can't be going to anyone's, right?
Right.
The state's going to have to enforce it though.
Yeah, I mean, somebody's violating any law, you get reported to law enforcement, I mean.
Tiffany?
In terms of what Jesse said, because I also talked to our Darren C R, who is our contract deputy. He said without guidance from the state, he can't even approach the people who are operating outside the law because he has no backup. There's nothing there to say, yep, Darren, go after them, okay? Even the DEA is hands off right now. They actually are, until there's guidance from the state, and there isn't guidance from the state in some areas. Medical marijuana is a totally different situation. But there's a big rural operation and it's not medical marijuana. And right now, the state's not helping out for local police officials, they're just not. So that's what's going on, that's what, I think that's what you were talking about, Jesse?
Yeah.
And it's not even Darren's fault, it's not the state cop's fault, it's not anybody's fault. It's that at the state level, there's no guidance coming from the state.
No.
But medical marijuana, you know, what's legal, is legal at the state level, that's fine now. People are doing right now, if they're operating inside what the state says they can do, that's fine. So for the people in this room that do have rural operations and they have their state licenses or whatever needs to be in place from the state, if they're operating illegally, that's fine. And that continues. Just now, what you said is to have an operation separate from that, like a dispensary, you know, store where you can have it. And I did visit with one of our other select board members, Ed, who's not here tonight, a, a rural operation for medicinal in Cornish, that's Joey Davis. And I was very impressed with it. He's operating above and beyond what he needs to do as far as guidelines from the state and as far as ordinances from the town of Cornish. So it, it's here, marijuana's here. There are really good medicinal things about the medicinal cannabis, okay? I would go in and get a book if anybody's interested, I have my little book. There's a whole list of stuff that medicinal cannabis is good for. So if anybody's really interested, I will have some copies made, they'll be available in town on Tuesday. But as far as having a separate operation from a grow operation, I think that's what we're here for today. Am I clear?
Yeah.
So to keep talking along on this, Article three is very similar to Article two, but it focuses on retail dispensaries and gives a definition of what a retail dispensary is. And again, with input from the public, with individual research, with everything else, we also narrowed down by zone what would be allowed, what would require a site plan review, what would be not allowed in any zone. And the, the table is, is here for that. And then it's the same for Article four, a testing facility, and Articles five and six, which are both manufacturing facilities.
And dispensary going back there, a dispensary is a state licensed retail operation and they only allow so many statewide and actual facilities, you know, is a dispensary now. So that's like, that, that comes, you know, that, that's got its own whole set of regulations. I mean, I have some, an actual dispensary is something that the state determines whether or not you can have as an individual and they do all their inspections.
I don't, there was only like eight or something like that, but over the last like six months, I think it's, it's been long enough.
I think it's supposed to go twelve, fourteen, twenty, then, thirty years.
Yeah, so. So what are the questions, comments, concerns? Well.
I know we said this is kind of like, but if we could.
You're talking about the same article?
Yeah, it's just, because we only put it out one day, I wanted to put out this other edition. And that's, if we could get the, the use structure legend underneath there too, just so people know what each of these are.
Maybe that.
One, I didn't see, I don't think it's on the other one.
Yeah.
Just so they know, like, I think most of the people who sit here know, but a lot of people might not know. It'd be E R R, F F L I, or L I O. Yeah, sort of like we have laid out now. Like the one that you guys have.
No, I think that's important, I think it's gonna, I mean, you know, like, yeah, please, I see this. You'd be making sure that information you agreed on is getting trampled into the vote or something.
Right.
You want to have all the information.
I mean, we could take, we could probably just take this and just kind of put this in that box and.
So again, our, our vote was for this finalized version of this and this is what's being put to the select, select board now. We'll do what we can, like, we'll say, hey, this is what we put before you, can you guys just do that? But I, I don't know.
Well, I know, we should make sure we're in the meeting, we don't say Article one.
No, I do, yeah, I'll, I'll.
We'll do what we can.
Yeah.
Like a good cause, that's something that people, you know, some people feel much more confident about.
Yes.
Knowing you guys are still really struggling over like something.
I know.
Without it in here, it kind of looks a little more scary.
What you guys have?
I don't, like, obviously I haven't been to many meetings, but I don't find anything in here that's like crazy or anything like that at all. Like, I don't see it having any, people having any real struggle with any of this, what we had here tonight at all. It's, I mean, I've been confronted by a gun, by a guy with a gun doing a day hike because he had marijuana on his property, you know what I'm saying? No posted signs, but he had marijuana on his property and he confronted me with a gun. Like, what's going on in the villages, the village, like, where the sites are, that it grows and it's out and about and people can see it, it's fine. But when we have these people that are like coming in, putting something on the back forty, people don't even know it's there and it's, it's certainly there and it's an issue. They, they aren't at this meeting, you know what I'm saying? Like, that's the stuff that, I'm everywhere, I'm all over all the time and I'm running into these people and I'm gonna be like, that's not like, I want our town to be friendly. I don't want someone to say, well, don't go over there because that guy is that, you know what I'm saying? Like, I mean, she and I were met by a guy with a gun. Like, he's lucky I didn't take it in public.
Lucky I didn't take it.
He had the most beautiful hair of ever.
But the same as you.
But really, though.
Where for some reason, they don't want you anywhere around their property. I don't know, you know, posted property and no one will go on it. But don't tell people they can't drive up the road, don't tell people they can't go on the other side hunting and stuff. And that's happened.
And like that, I think that's the bigger issue.
The area as well, wherever that.
Yeah.
And.
And I just don't know what.
I guess, what's the big secret? Secret, or what do you think, what's going on?
I think one of the.
We never had this in the past.
I think, no, I think we have had a lot of it in the past. I run into it.
Well, it's worse.
It's worse enough.
It's on a totally different scale now, I mean, it's not the way, I know what it was, I know what you're saying. People had, people were protected, but they were hiding their plants out in the middle of the.
People were coming out and telling you your own private property when you're setting on the town road.
So one of the, the comments from a member of the, the public during our, one of our workshops or informational meetings, I believe it was a workshop, I think has some merit in this discussion. He, he said that, was it Taylor City? That we need to get this out, out in the public and make it a regulated thing. That way people feel comfortable doing, you know, because right now it's not permitted. You know, everyone is very protective, they're, they're running around with guns and they feel like somebody might steal plants from them and things like that. One of the ways that I think that, that the town can really get a handle on, on things like that is by passing ordinance, this is just the first step. But by passing ordinance, to be able to say, hey, listen, we, we do allow this, we just want this to be in the right place and go through the right process for you to do it. If, if that process occurs, everything's copacetic. But again, if growers are following the laws that they're supposed to be growing, everything's copacetic. It's, it's those ones and twosies that, that aren't doing the right thing that screw it.
They seem paranoid for some reason.
Right, that, that are screwing it for everybody. And I think that, you know, if the town, the, the way that we reach those people and let them know like, hey, you don't need to be that paranoid and, you know, need to make this into like a zombie apocalypse type of homestead out there. It is for, you know, the town to know that this is going for a vote and that what has been passed through that vote will be allowed. And that will happen not only by us attending these meetings, spreading it with family and friends, we've got a YouTube channel now where our meetings are being broadcast, but also through us putting in ads in, in the paper to, to spread information. And that's really what this is about.
No matter what we do, there's gonna always be outliers. People that might have, what, you know, a hundred acres and the back forty ain't no mistake. But they might want to grow, you know, ten acres of marijuana, that's gonna be a lot of, that's a huge cash crop. So those, those people, I don't, I don't know what the answer is.
Well, I know you can't enforce it, it's gotta be state enforced, but that's what's gonna really.
Yeah.
Not in this, not in what's, this isn't scary to me anyways and it's, well, I can't, or anyone. My kids can't go somewhere, you know what I mean? What if a kid crosses a property that who knows why, chasing his dog or something, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know.
I think the more of this we see, the less of that we'll see though, the more we get it regulated.
Well, I, I agree with you, but these people, the people that care in this room, okay? The people that are doing this that I'm talking about aren't here, you've never even seen it before. They're gonna, they're not doing what they're. Honestly, their marijuana's not even staying in Maine, it's.
Yeah.
So that, and so I understand that's completely different and that's law enforcement and that's not town enforcement.
Somehow.
But we need, yeah, that's what's scary. If someone's friendly and cordial, like they're growing tomatoes, that's absolutely fine. But when someone's gonna shoot you because who knows why.
Or you shouldn't be, right.
Right.
Yeah, and the only way to do that is I think the state has to start to deal with enforcement. Because those, they're gonna be outliers, that are gonna try to grow your.
You know, people need to be comfortable if you're registered and you've got the paperwork and you know the town knows, and you know Darren knows, he's our guy. And it's, hopefully, you feel more comfortable being like, oh, if something happens, I can go to the authorities. oh, if something happens, I can go to the authorities, uh, if something happens, I'm the only line of defense, that's like, not that we need people taking it, you know?
They're coming out and telling you, get out of there, that is private land, it's not even their land.
You know, and one of the things that might be-
I haven't seen that before.
One of the things that might be helpful, uh, and this is, this is, again, separate from what we're discussing tonight, but, um, if someone were to craft up a, a letter of concern to the state of Maine about the lack of enforcement, uh, of, of marijuana laws, um, and get enough signatures, they can get it to the select board and have the select board forward it on, on their letterhead to the state, saying, hey, listen, this is a problem in our town, our, our citizens want, want to be heard, uh, can you please address this and at least get, get us an answer back? It's just an idea.
Yeah.
But it's, it's something maybe even the right step forward, uh, and I don't want to get up too much off track on this, this tonight, um, I, I do appreciate the conversation, though, cause that's really where the concern and the scary part of, of this marijuana stuff lies, um, but I, I just want to make sure that, did any other, other questions we have answered, I guess?
I'll just add to, when we first met, I don't know, it was maybe a year ago, I had a lot of questions, and if this was there that day, which I had said, could you research, could you talk to other towns, you definitely did your homework, and a lot of questions that I had are really clear, and the grids are great, I think people will know where it is, where it's allowed, where to vote, those kinds of things, so it, it looks pretty clear.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Go long.
Does anybody have any other comments, questions, concerns about the article? The warrant article? Now, again, uh, this is going to the select board, uh, it'll be emailed to them tomorrow, and there's no modifications that we're making from what we have, we've, we've voted on the finalized version.
Just the article line, just all, make sure that's an overview and that's on the article.
Right, I, I, what I'll do is I'll write a, um, just a paragraph, um, to this, the select board saying, hey, we wrote this, uh, to make it as clear as possible, can you please try to stick to, uh, the original language? I understand it's easier for, for you guys to put yes or no and totally starts in there, but it gives the members of public a, a lot better overview of what's-
I'm taking the coffee, I mean, it's a lot of the presentation, you know, that's the one, the one, yeah.
David, you said David wrote this?
Yeah. Well, no, which one, which one you got?
I have two of them.
Number one.
The one with the check boxes.
The one with the check boxes, yes, that's the one David put together.
Is that the one you're giving us, or you're giving us your copy?
We're giving you our copy, the one that says Article one, it's kind of like a paragraph or anything.
I just wanted to say, we were, because we're always trying to save the town, I'm considering doing, um, a combined special town meeting for this, because we're coming up to the end of our fiscal year, but I don't think that we should do that with this, I think this needs to be its own separate special town meeting, and as soon as we get it and it gets approved, we're going to put it in the paper so that we have special town meeting on it.
I support that. Would you have a ballot vote of this prior to the meeting?
I believe, I believe it was a ballot vote is what they said, yes. I would be kind of hard, how do you do that? How do you do a non-ballot vote when you're like, that, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Well, you could, I guess, but it might take all night, if you're doing all, yeah.
So, are these articles, four articles?
No, like, how, everything is-
Village residential?
Village residential, each one of these, somebody reading off all of those.
I think forever.
No, I, I think that's part of the article, that's how they approve, that's-
Correct, correct, so we're just saying it would be a lot faster if it was a ballot, and you just, they hand you the stuff, instead of, they speaking out loud and asking or counting hands.
And hopefully, we can advertise as well to get a little bit more than what we got here tonight, yeah, so, um-
I, I'll say, you know, we-
I, I think if you got, for people work, they got kids, they can't come to the meetings, but, you know, if you could have it voted, you know, during the day, a vote during the day, and, and into the early evening, you probably get better.
That would be for the select board to decide, but, again-
A couple of months, that's why we're not-
We're always looking for that magic, magic day and, and time to get an excellent participation, plan an informational meeting.
Seven o'clock on Thursday night, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, I, no, I mean-
You're able to get a good motivation for more.
It, it's too bad you don't get more. But I, but I can't talk to you, cause you haven't seen the year.
Alright, um, if, if there's no more questions, comments, concerns, uh, turn it back to the board, you guys have anything? Okay, so it's eight oh three.
I think motion made, yeah.
And I'm going to second that motion, and we are adjourned.